Please be seated, please. Please sit down. Have your official camera and squad down. On your left. Squad down on your left. Lead your camera and your cameras, lead them and leave this. The people who speak in the news to see him and kill him. The people want to see him. Back to him.
Please bring the judge from where he is standing. He has a fear of leaving. Make sure all of the people in the team know. He says next thing. Please. Please, you have a big job. I'm very, very proud of you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Those first remain quiet. Let's recant this. Let's recant, please. Let's recant.
Thank you squad, still no block for that.
Guys, remind you. Hello, me. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Before any form of division.
Squad down, squad down. You have not heard of it.
Of any statement. Before any form of division, any statement. Let me pray you a second. That will please. All fans of. And observe the one we need standing. For the days. Of our own dear brother. The dignity guaranteed. In our destiny. And the souls of Professor Ikone and all the friends with the partners. Through the ministry of God, and the Christian tradition. The presence of the Lord. The presence of the Lord. And. His team. My brothers and my sisters. And all the candidates now, but now part of the government. The head of the Lord. The here present. The chairman. About. About general promise. My brother and my present of Naseemah. Comes down. Let this time and all look at the. This is for the Lord. Our friend. For always of purpose. Our speech to the English. I will not take your time. Against your God. Today is not to complain. Many of our friends. But I give to our body, the effort to show the people of our land. That this journey will be marked. Will bring back the integrity of our heart. About today. Is a ghost of what our God is supposed to be. About today is a ghost of what our God is supposed to be. Because if you're going to surround Nigeria. What Nigeria was produced in the past twenty years. Is this security? Poverty? Suffering? And all sorts of problems. Which I do want you to tell me. Today. No Nigerian is secure. The woman around in the city of. Or this country called Nigeria. If you ask somebody, I need today to go to a village. For weekend. It is impossible. Those who have gone. After photos. Several. Amateurs. Everywhere Nigeria today is insecure. Nigeria today have been there and produce more. Poor people living in poverty. And any sovereign be. Anywhere. In the surface of the earth. That is only place where progress. By all record. Where one hundred and three million people living in poverty. Higher. That India. Higher than China. These two countries. Each have a population. Of over one point four million. If I were a poor people. And both of them combined. From the higher sons of two children. Then this is endless. That is why. That is why some of us decided to get involved. To solve this problem. If I look at it, it's very difficult. Everywhere I've been. I was in South Africa yesterday, I was in Kenya. Everywhere I've been. All Nigeria has asked. I was in Boronu, not Borunusar. How are you going to solve this security problem? My answer is that. The female are not more formidable. It's lack of leadership. We have a country. And we have to defend it. And they want to secure. That is the foundation of Christian tradition. The female to the east is not more formidable than government. That don't be female to the west or north, more formidable than government. With a clear leadership. One person will be charged. And I have shown people. That. We will be charged. And that's the way. To deal with it. Who responsible? Our security architecture. The agencies. Do the right thing, so the guy can tell the company. We will unite Nigeria. Nigeria today. Is no longer what it used to be. Private issues. With all the anti groups. Today. The only one who do politics. Is by dividing ourselves. The only one who do politics. Is by dividing ourselves. No. And a few people confessing to the president of Nigeria. And now the same thing. All we need to do is to listen to them. And last, I ask as a question. Who are wrong then we will trust both. We want every Nigerian to be. Proud of being a Nigerian. Above all. So can fight insecurity. Would our Nigeria be productive? That is all, and everything is that. We want to remove Nigeria from consumption top. Your boss is not producing anything. That is why I have criminality all over the place. And there's no place. You can testify or be able to verify that or other. This used to be a time of reference. Today. Is opposite of that. They have nothing. Has not been sold or produced in that. It's not happening today. And I was from back. We are going to have a Nigeria. Today. Everybody in business complaining about rate of exchange. Complaining about this. The rate of exchange of your currency cannot get better. Because it is a portion of your result. And your result is a portion of your export. If you're not exporting anything, you can't have money. You can't walk up to a country to cash money, you didn't pay anything. You have to pay something before you can cash anything. Your country is not exporting anything. And that is how I say. That foundation can start in our heart. Our country is a country of two hundred and fifty million people. Of calling their number. We live on high one hundred and twenty-six. Thousand. Thousand, three thousand square meters of land. Our electoral system. For our export. Last year. Is eighteen point nine trillion naira. If you divide it by six hundred and fifty. It will give you less than thirty billion dollars. That is not acceptable. In every part of the world. For a country of this size. It is not acceptable. Smaller countries. Are exporting more than this. There are more countries, there are more countries that are exporting more countries. And I also give it size. Like I told the last, what this one, have you seen that? A man alone. Can produce more than what. Nigeria exports. In a year. Vietnam. Vietnam is one hundred million people. Living on three hundred and thirty-one thousand square kilometers of land. So they have one third of our land. And they have of our population. And their exports. In two thousand and twenty-one. Is about five hundred and fifty billion dollars. We grew to ten percent. And one people who live on one third of our land. And have a population in there. And one of these guys then export. They need to export oil, which we export. They need to export natural things. They associate to our manufactured goods. Vietnam exported. Footwear. Nearly eighteen billion. But sixty thousand. Shoes. And factories in our heart. Not a product of anything. Vietnam exported clothing. At two billion dollars. So they need more clothing. Than. We export entire export, good night. And we have all these things out of the lab. And our God has been chasing us. None of. Of such countries have. Our road to the sea. Is that they are hundred kilometers. So what is that not happening? Because our country is not working. That's why I said, in two years of being in office. Our God have brought us to the one time. The man is the man that we see. So they can export the goods. The most of sheep. With westerners have time. It cannot produce. We are not in power, not in politics. For everything. Other than the most Chinese country. There's nothing much more. And we. Have been to here. Don't make it wrong. Our God has become a shadow of what you wish to have. So I want to look at one place I live. I went to the streets, I went to. I spent one week in Bangladesh. Watching women. So close. And everything for export. Bangladesh in two thousand and twenty-one exported. That's six billion dollars worth of clothing. I connect. And our God is here. That is why I say. It is not a complete promise. Who will bring what they might taste. Today. Our country is busy doing all sorts of support. For SMEs. You hear it in TV. They are busy. Do not stop support. My province does free, it's giving you know, this one is free. How many people in our market? That is the problem. Those who are doing something, our God getting anything. His announcement will stop in TV. Because we come to our country. You know what on the TV? Every part of Nigeria has a factory in government. I've gone to the law. And I don't know. The poorest people today in Nigeria, they can not know. And I said, give me a chance. I'll pull your people out of poverty. Because what you have. What it not have. The north alone can create and give their Nigeria. Ten times what they have from oil. But because of the land, the country where people are sharing. Are not producing anything. The north have vast, uncorrupted land. Our two biggest states. In this country. In terms of size. Niger. Boronu. And Taraba. Today. Those three states. Are one of the poorest states in Nigeria. If you go to Nigeria states. Several local governments. Is under the control of bandits. They're doing anything. They are waiting to receive. From Zatutria allocation. This is the one they can get in a year. After reducing their. Debt. Is about fifty billion naira. That is the highest they can get. A one year. Nigeria state is on seventy-six point three thousand. Square kilometers of land. Further land. Which you can cultivate. Nigeria state is two and a half times. The size of Netherlands. Netherlands is weak, dark, difficult. With all the bad weather. Total export of Netherlands. Of our cultural export of Netherlands. In twenty twenty-one. Is hundred and twenty billion dollars. Nigeria state is not exporting anything. Nigeria state can see itself. The youth there now have a job. That's why they are forced to bandit. If Nigeria state was able to do five percent. Not ten percent, five percent. Of what Netherlands did. In our thought of our two and a half times Jalan. They will earn fifty billion dollars. And since one hundred and fifty. Is three point eight trillion. About four trillion. That is eighty times what they against a Zatutria allocation in one year. And that's really. The country cannot complete the work. And I have a point. The national district of Borunus state. Where we have four more, and we have all sorts of things. I don't show up for you. You live on seventy point nine thousand. Square kilometers of land. Borunus state is one hundred and thirty times the size of Israel. Israel is twenty-two point one. Times three, sixty-sixty. Borunus state is seventy point nine. And you can see yourself. And you have some visa forest. Which is about three times the size of Israel. Is someone. It cannot be a threat to watch. Because we cultivate something there. They want something there. That we can cultivate, that we have this mission. Cultivate is not a threat to watch. And I will tell you many. And lecture in dialogue. We have from. That were sitting here. Why come with the water, or want them to go where we need it? What about the country is this? I would say, no. Borunus state can produce and feed the size. Is the same for me. And so it's so many that says it not. But I said, ladies and gentlemen. Taraba. I was there. Met with the government. Met with the leaders of there. I said to them. Look at the half of your state is. They live on the plains of Manbilla. Where you can cultivate flower, tea. Coffee. Bit of tourism. Taraba state is fifty-four. Point four cancers, yeah, billion yards of land. Taraba state is bigger than Belgium and Israel combined. I don't want to do anything. I said, we have a country. Kenya. In twenty twenty-one. Exported flour. Flour. Over half a billion dollars. There's nothing to cultivate in flour. And when they are so young boys and girls. Picking flour, they didn't pay a hundred dollars. And Kenya plays on ten percent of employment. And one hundred and fifty-five percent unemployment. People are just cultivating flour. It's not a waste site, isn't it? Ethiopia. Exported any coffee. One point one billion dollars. In twenty twenty-one. There's nothing to cultivate in coffee. Everybody who has seven, they can do. About one point five billion bottles of tea. There's nothing to cultivate in tea. These are things that are natural one. Where it can be done. For the tourism. That it can be done in Taraba. But nothing is happening in Taraba. They are waiting to share. It cannot happen. It cannot produce. All we do here is share. All we do here is steal. People are stealing public money. That's all we do. Our students. Were home. For eighty years. Now going to school. In a country where. The. The global intake of higher education. Is at eighty percent. We are ninety percent. Some of them are not taking in school. Yet we are close for eight years. And the reason why we're close. Eight years. Is because. Everyone's. Everyone's. Is because. I saw a agreement. In two thousand and nine. With further commitment of Nigeria. To pay them. Just. One point thirty trillion. And we paid them two hundred. For nineteen. Two thousand and nine. So today, Robert. How many years? That is one to do. And our God is good, the good. Yes. Let's talk about our foreigners. Change. We just created every dollar. We just don't give any money. To meet up our obligations. Because of stealing. Where the only oped country. Would have Sasha. With Venezuela. And not producing its quota. Where the only oped country. And not producing its quota. Even though we need every dollar. What we lose in a month. Yes, and one that will be shared by everybody. Including this and that. For what we lose in a month. Who solve the problem. Of. This disaster. The money we are owing there was one point one trillion. So complete this question, the last time I knew it. Was about three hundred people. In the month of July. Two thousand and twenty-two. Our oped production for one month. Was one million eighty-three thousand. Our quota is one point eight. But about two, one point eight of two. So every day from our official rate. We are losing in the month of July. Which is the month where the highest price of oil in last year. We are losing. Every day seventeen. Seven hundred and seventeen thousand. Dollars a day. Which at that one day. Was twenty-two million. Two hundred and seventy-seven pounds. At hundred and ten dollars. Is two billion. Four hundred and forty-five million dollars. If you were to write my situation. It will give you one point four million something. Which is a test of one. One month, one month. Just one month. That will not solve. They need to put one point one billion. I may not want to compute this question. But nobody said anything. Because those who are stealing the money. Are people in poverty. Nobody here can steal oil. Oil reduced stolen by people in. We have some city. Which is organized tribe. We are hundred. We are two hundred and fifteen million people. Pakistan is two hundred and fifteen million people. They are more rich than Nigeria. For they consume. Less than fifty percent of our daily consumption of oil. They are more rich. Which means they have more cash. But they are people of all that. All I can here to tell you to do. That this year's election. I know looking from the different parties. Different associations. Have different sympathies. But let me have shown you. This year's election. Is an existential election for Nigeria. The election. That will show whether we will go forward or we finish. Nearby. It is all going to be based on tribe. Let nobody tell you about an election from here. No. No tribe buys very cheap. Every tribe in Nigeria is hungry. Every tribe is searching for security. Every tribe is searching that for. Let nobody tell you to vote for you for his religion. No religion buys very cheap. You know a church where they sell the cheaper. Food cheaper, shk. Let me go there and buy. And continue my own church. Everybody is suffering. I tell the people in the north. Out of fifty-two years of Nigeria. You really charge for the two years. For the poorest states are there. So it has nothing to do with. Tribe. Has nothing to do with religion. These are all politicians. Used to hide their incompetence. And when they get there, those who believe in what they say become the president. It is nobody's fault. It is the fault of Nigeria to take like a country. The only one, the only one who to talk about this fault. I am the most qualified to talk about fault. Because, because my people for 15 years. After they told us no victory, no advantage. Have been treated unjustly. But I'm not talking about fault. I'm contesting this election as a Nigerian who is the most qualified to speak. I'm not asking for my fault. I want to give you a project to do around Nigeria. For very big of everybody. I love on the behalf, love on this way, I create a formidable Nigeria. Make every Nigerian would happy to say, I'm a Nigerian. Not as a east or west. I can see that. They are harsh, have fought insecurity. And fought a radical revolution that went into civilization. What they have said to our people today, they will still have. It is a lesson of character and trust. It remains of competence. It is not about your sentiment. We want to trust the person who are asking to do this country. And I'm asking you to trust me. It remains of someone who have commitment, compassion. I want to be a member to assist you to do the job. Because the job, Nigeria can let me see. And see, we need people who are capable to sadly religious. That is what I'm asking you. So I tell you, Abba, to thank you for the support. I hope you that Abba will be here today. I'm not a human person, you're a human person. And you will see. Because there are problems to be. And there are answers that you can call it. Human person, the only thing is to do, you see come alive. That's all we want to do. So when here bleeding material. To go out and that with the market is a journey. And I have opportunity, want to do. Anything you can do to solve, support one more. It really appreciate it. You are focused. You have friends in the north, friends in the west, friends in the east. Let them know that we are ready for this job. Today, there's four men, calling for men from Kenya. I don't want to say nothing. We are not, we are dealing with before. You can start checking our record. If anybody says he does the right corruption, let's go where he passed. And know what he meant. So don't say what to do. I was the one who won after I said for eight years. In eight years, I did not appoint anybody to meet the airport. And I don't want to say that to my state. Of importance in the middle of corruption. Can go and check whatever, anybody wants to turn to think up, who is anything. The same person. For eight years, not on front of the left, I said that my thing. And says, I believe for me. For eight years, I did not offer pension and creativity for one week. For eight years, I travel on Starlight. For eight years, I travel on station. And I clearly have some intention. That was used to remember my state when I was living. That is the fire that still be there now. What I was always when I came up here. And it is not wrong that without anybody. For eight years, not one piece of money. Will anybody say it was allocated to me directly or directly? Did you have office? Or if I did the mark, I said it is this all. And I want to let you know, he was there for a little bit, then go back. Did you have office? I imagine all of the national, all the competitive leaders in my state. And all the leaders, I tell them, I have the files. Which contain that I have in a same time, 50 billion dollars. Over 10 billion, that for the state. I had another one, give one of my, I have such ten, 50 billion dollars. Over 10 billion. And finally, 50 billion dollars, over 10 billion now. And today, I have seen to sign. What my goal is sign when they are leaving office. To sign for my own graffiti or pension or anything. Since I left Alambas state, I have found the government have not passed a bottle of water. This is the next year. When I came to ask you to vote. Please, Nigeria is going to have a special chapter. Go out and vote for your opponent. Go out and vote for Nigeria. And I'm telling you, hold me responsible. And this country will be a good country. Thank you, Abba.